Welcome to the City of West Miami. Today is our regular commission meeting Wednesday, October the 4th, 2017 at 7:45. For the invocation, Ms. Aguilar.
Thank you, please rise. Lord, tonight we pray for all the families and friends and all those whose lives have been shattered by the senseless and tragic shooting in Las Vegas just a few days ago. We pray for unity, for peace, for tolerance, so that families can reconcile the loss of their loved ones as they unite in their mourning. We pray for all first responders, especially those who rendered aid and saved lives, so that they may find comfort in the midst of this turmoil. We pray for our city, our children, for all of our elected officials, so that they can govern effectively. And in closing, we bow our heads for a moment of silence for all the lives lost in Vegas and for all the military personnel who have lost their lives recently while serving and protecting for our freedom, so that their families can rebuild their lives. We ask that your guiding light shines upon our wonderful country in hopes where we can one, be one day, one nation, under God again, and live in a healthier and better world. And we ask this in your name.
Amen.
Thank you, Mayor.
Deputy Chief, for the pleasure of allegiance?
We're allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Eduardo Mujina.
Present.
Vice Mayor Candida Blanca. Commissioner Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Rhonda Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Luciana Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item?
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for September 20th, 2017. September Charter Review Board Meeting, September 20, 2017, regular commission meeting, and September 15, Emergency Commission Meeting. And Mayor, I respectfully request the postponement of this item until the October 18th meeting.
Thank you. Next item?
Thank you. Item five, report of the City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, I will be brief tonight. They, my report is verbal, as you are aware. Cleanup efforts, post-storm cleanup efforts continue. We are in phase two of the process, and phase two basically involves the removal of the hangers, as they call them, we call them the limbs off the trees, those brown limbs that you see, that there's no salvaging to those. We have the company now doing that phase two. I am happy to report that we have to be maybe one of three cities in Miami-Dade County who is completely, has their streets clean, obviously commutable streets, and, and we're going back to our way of life. For that, I have to publicly recognize the efforts of Mr. Pena and the Public Works Department and the Code Enforcement Officer, who've been out there day and night, including weekends, to ensure that we are clean. And I think the residents recognize that, and I most certainly do, and I know that you do as well. So, also for the record, we did the, we did the closing. Mr. Mayor, as you're aware, you were called upon by the City Attorney and obviously for your execution of the note, the City Attorney, I have to say, worked diligently to make sure that we had the closing of the credit line, so that we can play, pay for the debris removal, pardon me. And Mr. Villalobos worked tirelessly last week to make sure that our closing took place on last Friday. So this has all been a rush situation. We have copies of the loan documents, which we will avail to you, they're downstairs. And we have specific instructions from our City Attorney. So I'd like to publicly thank Mr. Villalobos for the effort, the time, and in the manner in which he performed the, the closing, his closing duties on behalf of the city. That concludes my report at this time.
And I concur with you. I, I was present, like you said, and not only, not only the, the time that it took, but also the savings that due to the attorney taking over, we got. I don't remember the specific numbers, but I know there were some savings in there.
I don't have a bill, but you're absolutely correct, Mr. Mayor. I can tell you that our City Attorney saved us well over $5,000 or $6,000 during the process, and, and that's huge money for us. So, thank you, Deputy.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, at this time, shall we take any item out of order, or shall we continue with the order of the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend to follow the order of the agenda, because there are not many items.
Okay, alright, so let's do it. Next item?
Item six, report of the City Attorney.
Next item?
Item seven, report of the City Engineers, non this evening. Item eight, committee reports, report of the Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a committee report.
I, I don't have a report. Basically, Madam Manager touched upon the pickup, which is so important after the hurricane, and very, very proud of the City of West Miami, and Mr. Pena, and your staff, and all the members that participated, that's all. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes, I do, and I'm very happy to have, I actually have two reports. I'm gonna go with the most recent first. We received a letter, I believe an email, you, you were copied, where Mr. John Michael Lopez, our Parks Director, is letting us know that we are starting our first session of tutoring. Our first session of tutoring is going to start now on October 25th of this month. This is a tutoring program that you embraced and supported me on, probably what, two years ago, Madam Manager?
Yes, ma'am.
Two, two years ago. It's going extremely well. Mr. Lopez just actually put out the flyers yesterday, and he's already had five registrants already. So the parents are still embracing this, and each year, I know we're helping, we're helping the children, which is, is, was my, was my goal. So on that, I have another idea that I'd like to bring forward to you, education-related. And I've already met with staff, and I met with the school. I'd like to expand or extend our DARE program to our other school, which is Somerset. You know, we've had our DARE program ran by Sergeant Deluce for about, what, 20-plus years, Madam Manager? 25?
Twenty-five or 28 years.
Twenty-eight, I remember, 28. So we've had a, a very successful DARE program with Savannah Heights for 28 years. And now that we have another school, I'd like to extend that to that school. So I met with staff, actually Deputy Chief Abila was part of the meeting. The school's welcoming it, Deputy Chief and staff also are supporting me on this. So I think it'll be great for the children. This is the first year that Somerset will have a fifth grade, because this is intended for fifth grade. So this is their first year of a fifth grade. So if we can take our DARE program to that school and start with them, with their new, with their brand-new fifth grade, I think it'll be a wonderful service to the children, not only of the community, but, you know, of Somerset. And I'm just looking for your support and buy-in. Sergeant Deluce is ready to go, Deputy Chief says it is feasible, Madam Manager says it is feasible. So as long as I have your buy-in, it's a go.
Okay, great, good idea. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, thank you so much.
So you got your blessings.
Thank you, thank you.
Anything else for a committee report? Okay, next item?
Item nine, citizen presentations, Mr. Asbell.
Elliot Asbell, 15345 Southwest 77 Court, Palmetto Bay, Florida, 33157. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, and City Attorney, Clerk, and Manager. Really, this goes for all staff also. One, I'm here to make a few points. The first point, I certainly want to clear up any misunderstanding or misthinking. I believe that, recognized by most of you, when I came in, was warm. And I would like to say that I am not angry, that I have, no matter who might say what, I am not angry. I have had and continue to have, for the exception of one Commissioner, I have a great deal of respect and affection. Likewise, that goes to the City Attorney, Clerk, and Manager, Juan Pena, and staff that I'm not present, that I've known and had the pleasure to deal with, as you know, you know, many years. That's the first point I wanted to make. The second point that I want to make is that the reason, forget about the incident, but the reasoning behind me stopping, of attending, has nothing to do with lack of interest or wealth, the welfare of the City of West Miami. I have not changed in that matter at all. What has changed prior to the incident for me that was distraught, that broke the canvas back, but really, looking back on it, is probably not also material, as I felt then. I still think it's material, but time does things. And, and, and in any event, the reason, for two years prior to this incident, I began to feel, and I'm gonna make myself perfectly clear, this does not mean I'm correct, it means this is what I began to feel, okay? That slowly but surely, I was losing the ability to be an effective, positive influence in this chamber, and that feeling mounted. Everyone here knows, or should know, that I never have received any particular benefit from the city or favoritism, nor has any of my business. This was done out of concern and affects it. Anyone who thinks differently is dead wrong. And there have been accusations from time to time, but be that as it may. The fact is, I believed many is the time I have disagreed with the commission. Always, even in disagreement, two things were in my mind. One, I did not feel I had or shared the awesome responsibility that you all have in terms whether a decision is the right decision or the wrong decision. If it's wrong, I always felt you're the ones left to deal with it, and responsible, not I. So yes, I could be emotional, but in my mind, whatever I proffered was with good intention. And even if I didn't like the outcome, I bowed in deference to you and your responsibility, and still do. Most of the disagreements, this commission is well-aware, that afterwards, in terms of implementation, if in fact it was citizen protest, or meeting, or whatever, notwithstanding my own feeling, but bowing to your decision and responsibility, I always, always defended the present mayor at that point in time, the various Commissioners, and always spoke wholeheartedly in terms of your concern and how great the city was under your leadership, whether it's this present staff members or previous members. So that's also a true statement. And most of my disagreements really came in one core area. And you know I have always been a fiscal, responsible hawk, so to speak. Yes, budget has always been very important to me, and I've never hidden that. So most of my disappointments would come when, in fact, the commission, A, didn't do certain things that I suggested that would enhance income. And I understand some of the reasons behind that, that doesn't mean I agree. I vehemently disagree, and still do. And others were in regard to expenses. But more, basically more or less, the vast majority time, even when I disagreed about an expense, that was a minority, a minority of the incidents. Let me try to be specific, so you can see into my heart and my mind, and be maybe somewhat forgiving of my audacious personality and disruptions from time to time. We can go way back, Mr. Mayor, this, your commission, long ago, you were Commissioner then, passed the garbage tree. There was a whole situation revisited, which was political flint plant, you were harassed, and that situation of raising the garbage was reserved. I don't need to tell any of you that you provide great service, but you do not charge enough, in my opinion, for the service. More so, as relates to the commercial, small businesses than the residents, but in both cases. So that was one incident, that's on the income side. Another would be in the planning for the parking meters, okay? And I was involved in that, in many meetings, long discussions, eventually you went for parking meters. But what's missing? For some reason, on Red Road, where, off of Bates Street, going down that block, there were no parking meters. That area with the Latin American restaurant in particular was part of the original discussion in terms of the various locations. Well, I don't question the wisdom of why that doesn't have parking meters, but to me, again, that's a loss of income. Doesn't please me, it never will. Not Latin America, very pleased. Loss of opportunity in terms of income. Recently, you all pleased me a great deal. How did you please me a great deal? Your wisdom in terms of handling the drop, first, of Mr. Pena, secondarily, more recently, handling the drop of the City Manager and the Finance Director, I think is the, was it the Finance Director by title?
Yes, sir.
I think that was worry-wise decisions in terms of handling it. You cannot effectively, in the short term, and maybe not for decades, replace the ability and knowledge of those people. Eventually, you will have to, the Lord will take them, or someone after you will take them. But I'm glad to see that you've made provision for that to be ongoing. I think that's an excellent, excellent decision, and I hope no one disagrees. It's rare that this dais can be unanimous, no matter how the mayor may try, but it's rare. So that pleased me. On the expense side, going back a number of years ago, and I'll repeat it, I said it then, and this goes back to the period, I'm gonna be there quickly, I promise. This goes back to when the commission was looking a period of time and had a vote to have salaries. It's in that timeframe. There were other items, such as office and secretary, da-da-da-da. I spoke against all of those. You know, on the one hand, we hear we're a small city, and we can't be like Calabals, but on the other hand, we want the throne and the crown and the expenses that go like we are Calabals, for some of the Commissions. Now and before, this is not a new situation. In particular, the point I raised, and I raise it again, that in terms of day, day, dayed days in Tallahassee, when I first started coming, there was no room for the budget. I personally tendered a check that enabled whatever Commissioners and Personnel to be able to attend, because I fought a lobbying effort, and still do, think it's important. However, at this point in time, and way back then, I suggested you wasting money. I don't believe anyone other than the mayor or his designee and/or the City Manager, those two parties should be able to go, any other Commissioner, you have allowances. If it's so important for you to go, use your allowance and go. Don't add on. The mayor and the City Manager often come back, the manager from League of Cities to give a report and so on. So I don't think we need three, four, or five Commissioners going, or I think it's a waste of money. I understand maybe egos, or maybe some people feel they're more important, and that they're absolutely necessary for the process, and if so, use your Commissioner's budget if it's not important to you. Lastly, I want to say, now I want to go to the evening that I walked out of this chamber. I have the greatest respect for the City Attorney and affection. I believed then, and I believe now, his ruling or advice, as relates to you and our presence, Mr. Mayor, there were three zoning matters on the agenda. The City Attorney advised, after Commissioner Zlores made a motion, that it be postponed, that a deference to your not being here, is how it was presented, and that's fine, that it should be postponed. I believe then and now, the Charter speaks in terms of numbers in two specific sections, and none other. One section says to have a quorum, you must have three members. The other section says, in order to overrule a zoning recommendation, you need four members. Doesn't say a supermajority, it says you need four members. The City Attorney ruled that since there were only four, and there were three, and the acting mayor went with, and everybody on the dais that night, went with the City Attorney's recommendation, which certainly I understand why they might do so. I believe then that the City Attorney was wrong, I believe now that he's wrong. Like I said, it doesn't say supermajority. The whole intent of that number in that section was strictly to make sure that a majority could not overrule and make it more difficult to, in terms of a zoning department's recommendation. Never said all, and never said a supermajority, it says specifically four. And there were specifically four. Why do I think that's important then and now? The simple reason is that determination that night recorded, set a precedent, that I don't think the City Attorney considered, nor anyone else considered at that time, but I did. In point to fact, if one now is going to go with that interpretation, you set up the stage where any one Commissioner, based on whim, can stop the whole process of zoning, because by his or her absence, you will only have four, so the ruling would go on, and zoning, not would, could come to a complete halt. That's why I am so angry with the decision. But, the decision was made. I think it was wrong then, I think it was wrong now. Finally, I had promised myself at that meeting, let me go back to the beginning, that I felt my positive, ability to be a positive influence was waning. And that was, as a matter of fact, I would not be heard in terms of the second and third zoning issues after the ruling. It was roll them on through. Fine, I understand the pressures, okay? I don't think it was, maybe the City Attorney can review his decision, and maybe he could magnanimously say that he decided wrong. Otherwise, you have a precedent, as I just said. It is recorded. I'm not saying anyone would do that, but someone might. The real proper way that could have been handled was very simple. Ask that party or three parties to ask for a deferral. And if you ask for a deferral, which happens many times, you never would have had this issue with three Commissioners, four Commissioners, five Commissioners. That's my point that evening, it is again my point now. Am I angry? No, not any longer. Am I concerned? Yes, I just expressed my concern. What the City Attorney and the mayor want to do about my concern? Fine, that's up to you. In any event, when I walked out of that meeting, and here's the closing, sir. When I walked out of that meeting, I said to myself, Elliot, you're no longer a positive influence, you've been thinking this for quite some time. You are no longer coming to any meetings unless that meeting specifically deals with your business, otherwise you're not attending. The second thing I said to myself is that I am no longer financially contributing to the City of West Miami. I have held true to those promises over the time. However, we are in a different period, which strikes my conscience. We've had this hurricane, we've just heard speech about cleaning up. Everyone that's been through these things understands that you will be reimbursed by FEMA at some point in time, if there's no controversy. And I believe to the tune of no more than 70%, but I may be incorrect on that. But I know it's a timely endeavor. And you've pulled, have done the proper thing, you have an emergency, you've gone now to get a credit line, so that, you know, the people that holed off all this stuff, you know, they gotta be paid. Okay, so you've acted appropriately. Certainly, you didn't need a credit line, you could have gone to reserves, but I and your auditor and the City Manager know that your reserves are nowhere near where they should be in terms of being healthy. So you did the best you can do. In my hands, and this has nothing to do with anything other than this emergency, with your commission, Mr. Mayor, I would like to go to the City Manager, and as of this state, tender a personal check of mine to the City of West Miami, memo general fund in the amount of $10,000. I hope that this will ease the burden economically that the city faces. Thank you for your courtesy and time. God bless all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not done. Welcome back. Okay. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back. And I'm glad that you still have the ability to read minds and body expression. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Elliot, before the meeting, I personally told you that I missed you from being here, so now I'm going to say it publicly. I have missed your presence, I've missed the wisdom that you share with this table. So I have missed you, and I am glad you're back. Even if you say it's just for tonight, I am very happy to see you, and I truly have missed your presence in this chamber.
Ditto.
I second that.
Thank you.
We missed you, Elliot. And thank you for the most gracious.
No, without, without you, it's been kinda boring, you know, I mean.
Alright.
You know, you, you always add a little drama, we need that, man.
I appreciate the wisdom, the wisdom that you imparted on, on this dais.
I appreciate the drama.
Thank you, Elliot.
Alright, next item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item 10, under unfinished business. Item 10A, a nomination of alternate members to the Charter Review Board by Mayor and City Commission.
I...
Any nominations?
I think we're done with that.
Alternates, I believe the only alternate we have so far is Eric Diaz-Padron.
We have two, Madam Clerk.
Apologize me if, if I don't recollect any other appointment.
Saquaria Evangelista.
Saquaria Evangelista, and...
Mr. Diaz-Padron.
And Diaz-Padron. We have two alternate members, if any of your, of this commission, if any member of this commission wants to nominate any alternate members to the Charter Review Board.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Has everybody nominated?
on. I've had a couple of people, but they're just not following up, not-
So at this point, is this something-
No, Mr. Mayor.
Shall we leave it on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so, next, next item.
Next item is a follow-up report by city manager in reference to estimated cost of street signs.
Madam Manager.
Mr. Mayor, if I may direct this comment to Commissioner Blanes, and I know how passionate he is about the street signs project, we have not been able to do anything on this. I would recommend-
Understood.
-that we leave it on the agenda, and I promise you that at the next meeting, I'll be sitting down with Mr. Penna, and we could call you, and we can brief the commission as to where we're going with this and how soon we can get there.
Understood.
And we talked about it before the hurricane, and, you know, there we go. We were faced with that emergency.
Yep. Okay?
Yes, the October 18th.
New business?
New business, on the new business agenda items, item 11. Item 11. Item 11C in this case, we can just reassign numbers, letters, it's okay. Presentation of certificates of recognition to volunteers who assisted with pre-storm preparations by Mayor Mujinha.
Okay. Was everybody called on this, or?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I had confirmation of Mr. Diaz-Padrón who is present here. I also had confirmation with Justin Aguirre, who is not here tonight, and the other-
I think I saw him earlier. Justin.
Justin, here?
Yeah, he was here. He sat in the audience there, and he left, I guess, because I saw him.
I did not, so. I'll contact him tomorrow.
He was there when we were in the meeting, and then we adjourned, and then maybe he misunderstood and left.
Maybe he got confused, yes.
Okay.
We can, yes, or either, Mayor, it's your decision, maybe would you like to leave this for the October 18th agenda to the ones, to the volunteers that are not present? Maybe we can contact them again and see.
Yeah, let's do that, let's continue the item, but for tonight, we have Diaz-Padrón here, so let's come forward.
Yes. Thank you, Eric.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I want to make a comment in this item. I understand the recognition of the volunteers of this on the hurricane, and I think we forgot, I think I spoke last meeting, previous meeting about this. In this recognition, we forgot the members of the staff of the Commissioner's Six, former city mayor Rebecca Sosa.
Let me stop you right there, sir, I'm sorry. We did not forgot. As a matter of fact, I signed the letter, I signed the letter, and people were invited to come. So, so let me stop you right there. They were recognized, as a matter of fact, I signed that letter.
Well, thank you very much for telling me that. I maybe make it the wrong word, forgot. But the staff of the Commissioner Sosa was working there with the Commissioner Blanes, and they were very active, they did a very good job. We should talk about that. And I'm happy that you said that you make a letter to them, right?
We will leave it for next time, but I have the clerk to make a clarification.
You make a letter to their Commissioner Sosa's office about that.
Mr. Mayor, would you allow me to read all the list of all volunteers?
May I finish?
Yes, go ahead, I'll finish, and then I want to hear, I want to hear from-
Yeah, but I didn't finish yet.
Go ahead, you let me know.
Okay. Okay, I was, that we have to be sure, you know, to recognize them. Also, according with the sandbags, I understand that Ralph Orell, he donated one truck of sand, right, Yolanda?
Yes, sir.
He donated one truck of sand. We have to recognize that, we are recognizing, and he's a very nice guy, and very, always handling things with, for the city. But I understand the Commissioner Rebecca Sosa donated two trucks.
Correct.
All right? So Commissioner Sosa donated two trucks and the bags. Without the bags, we cannot produce the sandbags. So we should recognize in public the office and the Commissioner Rebecca Sosa, former mayor, that he donated two trucks of sand, in addition to Ralph Orell, that we have to, we already recognizing him, the one truck of sand. And also, Mayor, I receive calls for many residents in the city, people who has been for many years, and they are very upset, because one of the last meetings that we have here, one of the residents of the city insult Commissioner Sosa, making reference to her that she was not here with her circus. Something that should be, I personally apologize her in my name as a commissioner, and I think in the name of the city, I don't know the mayor, but at least in the name of many people I know, because that resident who called her circus was unacceptable. And I just want to tell Commissioner Sosa in public, I'm sorry very much, I really was not attending the speaking that was she, that lady was talking about, and I was involved in reading things. And I think we should recognize that that should not happen again. This is very, very inappropriate, that she has been the mayor, she's a commissioner, and we should not, not for any other residents, we should not let a resident come to insult another resident. I want to bring these two things to the table and really recognize the Commissioner Rebecca Sosa, who has been helping us, and we have to be aware of all these things. So I'm pretty sure you all agree with me in that. So that's, this is my comment about this.
Commissioner Suarez, let me clarify something for the record. I understand that nobody, not Commissioner Sosa, but nobody that sits on this table should be insulted, okay? But it happens. I personally have been insulted, and one of the things that when you signed up to be a commissioner, a mayor, or you, a public servant, you're subject to that. Our current president of the United States is subject to insulting every single day. And so that's, that's part of the territory. The other thing that I want to say, we live in a free country where people are entitled to say whatever they want to say. As a matter of fact, I'll give you a perfect example. My father, years ago, due to the communist regime, his beloved brother turned against him, and he wrote a letter that, to this day, I remember. He says, "Let me tell you how great this country is. I can stand in the corner of Flagler and 12, next to La Quina de Teja, which at that time, everybody knew, and I can insult the President of the United States. And if anybody comes and assaults me, that person will be arrested. That person will be arrested." That's how great this country is, and nothing will happen to me. So, moving forward, yes, it is a shame that people come over here and they insult somebody that has, you know, given a lot of time, a lot of her career, a lot of her effort, and many good things that she has done to the city of West Miami. But just because we stay quiet doesn't mean that we condole it. We, it's just, it's like a citizen presentation, people come over here. If people get totally out of hand, then it's a different, but everybody's entitled to, this is a free country, this is, you know, freedom of speech. So that's my opinion. And Madam Clerk, can you clarify this item?
Mr. Mayor, I asked previously if you wanted me to read the list of the volunteers for the record.
Please do.
Yes, the list of the volunteers are the following, it's the following. Rice Fordster, Justin Aguirre, Eric Diaz-Padrón, Javier Estefan, Alex Fernandez. From District Six, Commissioner Rebecca Sosa's office, Natasha Santos, Manny Orbis, José Daniel, Betty Aguirre, Alex Fernandez, Gloraima Richardson, and Liliana Ramos. From our employees, we had Alex Rosario and Cristobal Dominguez. And residents also, Ralph Orell, Ivan Chávez, and our commissioners, Ronda Rodriguez and Juan Blanes. As previously said, a letter was sent already, Madam Manager?
That is correct, the letter was sent.
Madam Clerk, did you have from Rebecca Sosa's office, from the Commissioner's office, do you have Natasha? Is there Natasha?
Natasha Santos.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
A letter was sent, it was actually signed by the mayor yesterday afternoon. It was sent via email to the commissioner. It did not have an invite date, and I take full responsibility for not including an invite for tonight because of the timing, the short timing. It was my intention to follow up with an invitation to her and her chief of staff for them to come at the next meeting. As you know, my granddaughter has been in the hospital, and I have been in and out of the city, and so I was not able to communicate the meeting invite for the certificate presentation for this meeting. Also, we have to do the same with Mr. Armando Fernández from Florida Power and Light, and I was going to ask the mayor if we could defer this item and unite him with the balance of the volunteers for the next meeting. However, it should be noted, and let the record reflect, that both Commissioner Sosa and Ralph Orell received a letter signed by the mayor thanking them for their donation of sandbags and the trucks that each respectively donated to the city of West Miami during the pre-storm effort.
Thank you. Next item? I think that item should be deferred, which is item D.
Yes, the recognition to Armando Fernández will be, is deferred until the October 18th, 2017 meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Next item would be item E, request for resolution authorizing the city manager to renew the inter-local agreement between the city of West Miami and Miami-Dade County as co-permittee under the NPDES permit, FLS 000003, by city manager and director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this inter-local agreement comes to you as part of our, every five years, correct, Mr. Penna? The city must renew the permit with Miami-Dade County under the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, which is what we know as the NPDES. Back in the day, when this NPDES was ordained, if you want to call it that, by the, by the federal government, gave us an option to have the county administer the program and clean our stormwater drains, or have the city opt out and pay a permit fee to the county. Correct or not correct?
We clean our drains.
I know that. We opted out of them doing the work.
No, no, no. The NPDES, all it is, is a, an inter-local agreement with the county, where they're the main participant, and we are-
A co-permittee.
Of the-
Of that global program.
Correct.
And basically, we are responsible for a report to Miami-Dade County under this federal mandate of what drains we clean, and basically how we comply with this mandate from the federal government. So this comes to you every five years. It is expiring this coming year, and if you renew it tonight, it will take us through September 30th, 2022 with the county.
Okay.
Motion.
We need to read the resolution?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item F, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the city of West Miami authorizing the city manager to execute the inter-local agreement between the city of West Miami and Miami-Dade County under the NPDES permit, FL 00003, as co-permittees providing for reports, maintenance of the storm sewer system as applicable by the NPDES, providing for a renewal to the existing agreement effective October 1st, 2017, through September 30th, 2022, Mayor and City Commission.
I have a motion by Commissioner Suarez, I need a sec. Okay, Commissioner, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Blanes, have you voted?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Mujinha?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Go to the order. Motion to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good night.